I call to order the special meeting of the Eau Claire County Board of Supervisors on this Tuesday, November the ninth. We, we will, we'll do the honoring of the flag first. Please unmute and together. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
To the republic.
Public.
Which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Just for all.
Supervisors, please mute your microphones at this point. Just a reminder at the beginning, we'll follow the same procedures that we did in the last meeting. That is, you unmute your microphone when the chair recognizes you, recognizes you to speak. You raise your hand in order to be recognized. The exception will be Supervisor Schneider, who will be put in, in speaking order on her request. Clerk McDonald, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gibson?
Present.
McKinney?
Present.
Knight? Supervisor Knight? Supervisor Begonas told me she would be absent. Anton? Zuck?
Here.
Chilton? Stelges?
Here.
Maury?
Here.
Poffey?
Here.
Bates? I don't know if Kuklina's there. Russell?
Here.
Gatlin? Supervisor Gatlin said she would not be there. Smire?
Here.
Ambuch Boyle?
Here.
Neiman?
Here.
Dunning?
Here.
Wilkie?
Here.
Anderson? Anderson? Beckfield? Who was there earlier? Roger Beckfield?
I said here.
Okay. Schneider?
Here.
Leary?
Here.
DeLuca?
Here.
Jansen? Jansen? Schraffnagle?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Rock?
Here.
Hank Christopherson?
Here.
We have twenty-one present, seven absent.
I joined late, Carl Anton.
Okay. That's you, Carl. Twenty-two present then.
Thank you.
This is Samantha. I think Supervisor Anderson is on, on the phone possibly.
Give him instruction on how to unmute on the phone.
Star six. But you may have to do a star three and raise your hand and then they let you unmute.
It unmuted very briefly when you called for Anderson and I heard a quick here and then it muted again. So I just wanted to double check.
Okay, so we have, how many, Clerk McDonald, twenty?
Twenty-three present, six absent.
Thank you. We have quorum. Tonight, we have a public hearing on redistricting. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute fifty-nine point one zero, sub three, sub B, a public hearing will be conducted by the Eau Claire County Board of Supervisors to provide comment on the Board of Supervisors' final plan for county and municipal redistricting. We're going to begin this section with a brief redistricting update from Administrator Shoff.
Thank you. Actually, we have with us Peter Strand. Peter is the individual on our team who has coordinated all of the work on the redistricting and he will walk the board through that work and then be available to answer questions about next step as well. Peter?
Thank you. Yeah, we are here at the final plan and I'll walk you through some of the redistricting. We'll just give a brief overview, especially for some that may have not been involved, as involved throughout the, the process. Give you an update on where we are now and then what will happen in the future.
Now, Peter, Peter, just a reminder that you are, you are presenting to the public at this point.
Okay.
This is for the sake of orienting the public.
Okay, thank you. So, following the completion of the United States Census, the federal government requires all the, the states and local government, units of government to do a redistricting. So every ten years, we're doing a redistricting. This, the new districts at every level must be substantially equal in population for an equalized representation. And this time around, there was a delay in getting our data from the federal government. We did get it in mid-August and at which time Eau Claire County started the redistricting process. We created the redistricting committee within the committee of administration and they directed staff, myself, to do the redistricting. In two thousand and twenty, our, our Eau Claire County had a population of, up of one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and ten. That's up from ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six. And the committee directed staff to do a plan with twenty-nine districts. Twenty-nine districts with that population would give us an ideal population for each district of three thousand, six hundred and forty-five. So, at that point, we, we did a, we did create a plan. We followed the tenants of redistricting. The first tenant was substantially equal in population. That's the overarching principle for all of that. Comes from the Constitution with the one person, one vote clause, equal protection clause. So, we did, over, I'm checking the screen, of our final supervisory district plan, all those, all, no district in that plan has a population deviation greater than four percent from the ideal population. And the total combined on the final plan is actually down to seven point three five percent. And anything less than ten percent is considered good. Also, beyond substantially equal in population, we needed contiguous districts. So contiguous things all in a line touching. So there should be no district with holes or islands. Unfortunately, except when there is. So we do have two islands, the city of Eau Claire, outside of the city's boundary, that being the landfill in the former little red. And that meets the, it still meets the contiguous definition. Also, districts should be fairly compact. And our districts are fairly compact with, and on the final plan, we've actually increased some compactness. The other, the other, the next set of criteria we wanted to, that we were instructed to adhere to is to preserve, preserve political boundaries. So they would, when redistricting, you should recognize that the, the city of Eau Claire boundary or the town of, say, Seymour's boundary and preserve that in your districts. It's really important because later, after we created tentative supervisory, then we, the municipal, our municipal partners created wards. And in order for them to effectively create wards, we really needed to help them by preserving those political boundaries. And we'll go into just a little bit of that. And then we also took into account communities of interest. This could include people of common economic, ethnic, cultural, or other bonds such as unique environmental concerns, transportation, or other educational concerns. Most of ours for us was, could what we would consider neighborhood concerns. Although our districts, every district in our plan changed, so nobody's, none of the twenty-nine districts are exactly the same. You know, because of the increase in population for the whole county. But we've tried to maintain the heart of each of our districts. The core of the voters within that district are still in the same district. And although they did, you know, as, as expected, they did move around some, especially on the edges. And that was also true then, we did that with wards in the, with our municipal partners. And then, now we have created a tentative plan. The board approved that plan. We went and worked with our municipal, municipal partners. Each of them created a ward plan with our help, passed their ward plan. Then we, we had a reconciliation phase for our supervisory plan. And the plan you'll review, they will review tonight is the reconciled plan where all of our districts are made up of whole wards within our municipalities. So with that, I'll, I'll, I'll stop there and then answer any questions later or however you'd like to go forward.
Well, Peter, let's proceed to Administrator Shoff. Are you going to provide an overview of what happens with this plan now?
Very briefly, yes. The plan is approved, well, tentatively be approved by the board this evening. It will then be passed on to the state of Wisconsin. The legislature will make its recommendations for final boundaries and any adjustments to the plan will be made according to what they actually come up with for some of those final boundaries. In other words, if our plan needs to be adjusted slightly, it will. But this is the last step that the Board of Supervisors and our community partners need to do in approving the final supervisory district plan.
Thank you. Our questions and discussion regarding the supervisor, regarding the redistricting plan will come up when we consider the resolution. Right now, we're, we are in public hearing. So I'd like to open this then to any public comment. Samantha or Clerk McDonald, do we have anyone in the public who has indicated a wish to speak?
No, I do not hear of anybody.
Okay, Samantha?
I agree with Clerk McDonald. I have not heard of anybody and I don't see anybody online, but you can call for it.
Okay, I will do the call though. Is there anyone online who wishes to present comment? Or has question? This is a public hearing. Anyone online who wishes to present comment or has question or concern? Third and final time, anyone online who wishes to present comment or has a question or concern? I hear none. We will draw the public hearing to a close and move on to the only item on our agenda from the Committee on Administration, File sixty-six. Clerk McDonald.
A resolution approving a final supervisory district plan, directing the Department of Planning and Development to forward the final plan to each municipal governing body and directing the county board chair to file the plan with the Secretary of State.
Motion.
Beckfield so moves.
Beckfield moves.
Schaffnagle second.
Schaffnagle seconds, thank you. Background, well, I'm not sure here. Administrator Shoff, Court Counsel, who will provide the background for this resolution?
This is the administrator and I will be happy to do so.
Thank you.
The plan before you this evening is the plan that the board has worked on with the other local municipal governments to bring us to this point of having a final proposed supervisory district plan. It incorporates the, the new boundaries for the supervisory districts as well as the local boundaries for local wards within each of the municipalities.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? Please use the raised hand function.
Schneider with a question.
Well, there's a raised hand. Now, Schneider followed by Bates. Supervisor Schneider, go ahead.
I thought Peter said it was contiguous and I'm in District twenty-two and most of mine is at the foot of State Street Hill. But then there's, if I understood what I was told right, there's some up at the top of State Street Hills, so there's land in between. How did that happen?
Peter? Without objection, Peter?
So, it is, District twenty-two is contiguous and it does, the boundary does go on State Street for a little bit. It does go up the hill and bounder, bound, have a boundary on twelve. But all of the census blocks within District twenty-two are contiguous with census, with the other census block. So they're all touching.
So even though there's no people there, it's still considered contiguous?
Yes. Even though, there are definitely areas in many of the districts that have census blocks with no people in them. Often, they're right-of-way blocks or maybe even a block that has, you know, part of the river. But that, that, they still would consider that a block and they still use it for the contiguous, being contiguous.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Supervisor Bates followed by Supervisor Leary. Supervisor Bates. You probably have to unmute yourself.
I'm wondering, Peter, as this went through the various municipalities in the county, if any of the townships or other villages and such had any comments or any changes that needed to be taken into consideration?
Yes, and thank you for the question. We, we worked very closely with all of our municipalities. Actually, I helped construct all of our ward plans. But they definitely did have, some of them definitely did have input. And the one I'd say that impacts the final plan the most will be up in between the boundaries between three twenty-three and twenty-seven. And we have previously talked about this area that it might look funny. And what they wanted to do was the, the town of Seymour in creating their ward plan, I would say helped clean up or simplify these boundaries while maintaining those political communities of interest, keeping the town of Seymour's voters in, in a single ward rather than making it sort of an orphan ward. But this boundary, if you can see my screen, between Ward two and three in the town of Seymour, moved to help them facilitate a cleaner boundary. So yes, we did get feedback and work with our municipal partners extensively on helping create their ward plans.
Supervisor Leary.
Thank you. And my question kind of piggybacks on the previous question of Supervisor Bates. In District twenty-three, which is in mine, and the neighboring, I think of them as kind of like fingers interclass, some of the borders. So, and I, I'm glad that they have straightened a lot of that out because it was very confusing for everyone. But they are diligently building a whole bunch of new homes and I know that's going on elsewhere. So my question is, are those homes included in the boundaries already? Or what, how do they fit into the plan when there's something new? Two of them are just about ready for move-in. One, they had a family move in last week. So, you know, it's kind of a right now question.
Right. So the numbers, if you can see in here, we have all the census blocks and they have little tiny numbers on them. They're, they're the count on census day. So what they do is they actually, they take that one snapshot every ten years and that's, that's the figure we use for redistricting nationwide. And so they really aren't good, bad, or indifferent. They aren't taking into account areas of new growth until the next census. And so there are, there will be districts that, over the course of the next ten years, will gain and lose people. I think we can kind of, you know, estimate where those are on the boundary of the city primarily. But yeah, it, they, it's a snapshot on census day.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Schaffnagle.
I was muted. Looking at twenty-three and twenty-seven, I thought you said that there wasn't any islands or strange disjointed areas. But twenty-three and supervisory three have little bits of twenty-seven in them. Is that normal?
I'll, I'll pull up one other map or figure here that I sometimes can help show it off. So these, what I'm showing you right now, these are all of the parcels that are located within the town of Seymour. And then this is actually the boundary, that pink line between the town of Seymour and the city of Eau Claire. And if we zoom in to some of these little peninsulas or whatever we're going to call them, we can see that they actually are, just by little tiny, tiny threads, they are contiguous. Even though, and that's through a product of annexation between the city of Eau Claire and the, and the town of Seymour. We, we don't have a sort of say-so in that. So then when you fill it in though with the city parcels, you know, and I think this area was impacted by the construction of three twelve and so many other things. But those are residents of the town of Seymour. They vote in the town hall. And so they should be in a ward or need to be in a ward of Seymour. So it's, it's, it looks funny, but I think over, it's, that's just the bound, the political boundary that we have.
Supervisor Leary? I'm sorry, Schaffnagle?
Oh, I didn't take my hand down. Thanks.
No, I, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I'm really glad that mine doesn't have the strange delineations that I'm seeing in twenty-seven.
It does look like a gerrymander, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter, for your explanation. Supervisor Knight?
Unmute. Yeah, town of Seymour looks a little bit scrambled there, but to my recollection, it was always scrambled. So I don't think I can blame Peter for this. This is kind of an interesting, diverse neighborhood. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to live for it as the District three person.
Thank you. Supervisor Maury?
Yeah, I just had a comment. You know, my district is primarily rural, but I've acquired some of the town of Washington. And now I'm, I'm representing people from four different townships. And I like to go to the town meetings, but it gets harder and harder if there's, if you have four of them to attend. Or maybe there's other supervisors who have multiple towns that they represent as well. But I know, I know that's not a consideration, but I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Supervisor, please lower your hands when you're done. Supervisor McKinney?
Just a question to clarify for me. When these boundary lines change, it could actually change where a person would go to vote?
If a person annexes, if a parcel annexes into the city and they're no longer a resident of the town of Seymour, their polling place would then be in, in a city polling place. So it would be only if the resident themselves actually annexed into a different municipality.
Okay, because it was looking like there's ward changes? And when a, when a ward changes and you voted in one ward and now it's going to be a different ward? Does that make a difference where you're going to vote? No?
Yes, it could. Specifically in the city of Eau Claire, and Clerk McDonald can, can correct me if I'm wrong. The city runs their, their polling places and, like I used to be in, in Ward nine and now I'm going to be in Ward two or something like that. And my polling place may or may not change. But that's definitely, if you're in a different ward than you were previously, then you could have a different polling place.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor McKinney, was your question, how does the voter know where to go?
No, I just wondered about that change, but that was answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, anyone else who wishes to speak?
Schneider with a second question?
Your hand is up. Go ahead.
So once these get approved and all, how do we get a copy to trot along with us when we go out looking for signatures?
We will, we will create copies. We will post them on our website, I believe. Sue will also be putting one in all of your mailboxes if you like. And then we will also help you or help anyone who, on the next, somebody comes in with like a can, an address list for any of these, we can actually create that for you too. So an address list for anybody who would be interested in taking out papers for a supervisory district. We can provide that in like an Excel doc or mail or something for you.
Just an, oh, sorry.
Who's speaking?
That was Tammy, is Tammy. I was going to ask the address list, does that include phone numbers?
No. It, it'll be, I, I don't have their phone number. It'll be an address list of, of the, the single addresses that we have within our property, our real property database and, and, yeah.
Again, I ask if you're going to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the chair. Supervisor Bates? Unmute, please.
Any other question I have, Peter, is whether or not you anticipate any legislative objection to any of the districts in Eau Claire County?
Is that a question directed to Peter?
Yes.
Okay, Peter?
I have not heard anything like that. I don't foresee any, anything like that. As far as down as when the state produces theirs, what impact that will have on us, I don't know. But I don't, I don't foresee any objections to anything we've done. And we've worked with the, the, the city of Eau Claire and the city of Altoona to help them create theirs. And I don't see any objections to anything that, anyone objecting to anything they did as well. So, none that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, I'm in District eighteen. And I was then concerned of the addresses that you were going, part of my territory is pretty easy and that shouldn't be too hard, the area south of Clermont Avenue. But the, the property north, the university students, their mailing address is not the same as their voting address. So I was wondering if that creates any problems as far as, they probably don't even have a list of people who are there, so.
No, the address we would provide would be the, what we, what I kind of call the structure address. So it is the address of the residents in there. So that wouldn't be their home address for students. It will be the address of the actual physical structure in the district. Not who actually owns it or pays taxes on it or anything like that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Is a question or concern? Supervisor Stelges?
Yes, thank you, Chair. District eight. I'm just a little confused on the political boundaries.
political boundaries. Uh, if you can zoom in there a little bit more. I'm looking at the individual, yeah, okay. So this, uh, section that goes up to the upper, uh, the upper left there with a population of two fourteen, looking at the more detailed map, are some of those actually in the city of Altoona?
Um, no, every, nope. Uh, everything in the city of Altoona would be in District four. Uh, the, then south of there is, is District eight. Um, I will say that this is another, you know, we pick on the Seymour, uh, area up there. This is another area of what I would consider very interesting annexation patterns where it's not been the cleanest over the years, as you can see through all these squiggly lines up here. Um, we did, uh, work hard to make sure that it was on this time put forward on centerlines of roads. So it'll be either on, all on one side or the other of the road going down the road. Versus, there are some census blocks that have, you know, natural features or whatever. So like the river. So the river is also the political boundary of Altoona. But then all of the, all of the rest of this is on a centerline of a road. So you, um, can more easily identify who, who the residents of your district are.
Okay, but, but I'm look, actually, I'm, Peter, I'm looking at the, the individual maps that are posted on the website. And it shows these political boundaries actually creating islands in it. I don't, I mean, I'm confused as to what, if it's all in the town of Washington or whether some of that is actually within the city of Eau Claire?
I would, uh, I would have to pull up the individual, um, map of eight. Um, the large one here. Sorry for the. There, um, there will be, um, none in the city of Altoona. It looks to me, just looking at this, that there are some that are in the city of Eau Claire and then some in the town of Washington. That is correct.
Okay, so in this instance, then we don't perfectly follow political boundaries, so we do pick up some of the city.
Yes. Um, and actually, I would say, it's, if I remember correctly, it's, it's four or five hundred city residents, um, in that area.
Yeah, it's a pretty big chunk in there, yeah. And that's, you know, that's certainly more urban than the rest of the district, which is a little bit incongruous, but, uh, I guess. Okay, well, that answers my question, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has a question or concern? Anyone else? Okay, Supervisors, we will now move to vote. We are voting. Sorry. We are voting on File sixty-six. Kirk McDonald, would you read the top paragraph of the resolution? I'm sorry, did I catch you off?
Yep, that's fine. Approving a final supervisory district plan, directing the Department of Planning and Development to forward the final plan to each municipal governing body and directing the county board chair to file the plan with the Secretary of State.
Okay, we have the motion, it has been read. We, we are going to do this by roll call vote because of the importance of it. So Kirk McDonald, would you please call the roll, the roll call vote?
Gibson? McKinney?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Anton?
Yes.
Zook?
Yes.
Delges? Maury?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smire?
Uh, last, please.
Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Nieman?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkie?
Yes.
Anderson? Um, Beckfield?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
DeLuca?
Yes.
Raff Nagel?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Frank? Frank? And Kristofferson?
Yes.
And Smire, yes.
The twenty-three, yes, is zero, no's.
It is unanimous. Thank you, Supervisors. We have now reached the end of our agenda. Um, uh, before we adjourn, I would like to, on behalf of the board, I believe, thank Peter for all of his work on this very complicated project. Uh, and thank, I thank the board for your time, patience, and attention. We are now adjourned.